Okay, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and call over to the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, July 10th. The clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Miklos.
Here.
And Howell is absent.
You'd all please rise and join for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, call our first item, please.
First tonight is agenda update. You have one amended item, that is item 7F. The amendment has been provided to the council and copies are available to the public on the back table.
Okay, next item.
Your next item is business from the floor. You have one request to speak from David Petressor.
David, come on forward, sir. You have three minutes to talk about item not on the agenda.
And here is information for Mr. Petressor.
Ladies and gentlemen.
This is to be passed out to all the council members?
Yep.
Okay. And for you. And for you. Is that one for the manager?
Yeah, there's one for him, too.
Okay.
May I address individual council members?
You can talk to all of us as a whole.
Gaylord, I sent you an email concerning this particular matter. Do you recall me?
Yeah.
Excellent. Have you spoken to any members of the council regarding this issue?
I have not.
Huh?
No, I have not.
You have not?
No.
So I have specifically given you an email with this information and asked you to share it with the other council members, and you have not done so?
I have not.
Excellent, that's fine, that's understandable. Ladies and gentlemen, I am a veteran, I'm a disabled veteran, all my money comes from the government, and I don't pay any taxes for it because I have aided and defended this country, and the government has bestowed upon me this disability. Now, I get a fixed income, and I cannot make more. I do not work. I only have X amount per month, per year, and that's all I have. So I have to budget to make it last throughout the entire year. Now, I have registered, or leased a vehicle from Kia, Folsom Lake Kia, and time came to register said vehicle, and the legal obligation to register a leased vehicle per the California Leasing Act is the lessor. It was their legal responsibility to register the vehicle. They did not. The lien holder, which is Hyundai Lease Tiling Trust, did not. They told me to go do so, and the DMV, if you look at this first document, the DMV says that I do not have the authority to register said vehicle. So I went, spent my time and my money, and now I have a vehicle which I pay $325 a month, which I can no longer drive because it's not registered. So I contacted Kia and I said, hey, listen, you guys need to fix this. And we went back and forth, and we went back and forth, and we went to small claims, and I won my case. However, Kia has written derogatory comments about me, saying that I owe them money, which I have told them I do not, and I am contesting this debt. However, they still choose to pursue me, and now my credit score has dropped a total of 140 points. I have never missed a payment in over a decade, and having dealt with this company, my credit score is gone. It's just, we're in the 550s now, okay? I have been harmed. I tried to get a new apartment. I'm in the process of moving, and where I need to go, I couldn't get that apartment because my credit score is too low. This company has repeatedly harmed me, and it has not given me back what I've asked for. And they continue saying that I owe them money. I ask for you guys to look at the documents that I have provided for you, and let me know whether if I'm in error or they're in error, and I will come back in two weeks' time, because I believe you guys have another council meeting at that time.
Yes.
And I would like to know what will be done about this. Because from what my understanding is, you guys are set forth or elected to represent me as the individual. And this corporation, for some reason, has more rights than I do as an American citizen. And so if the government that is elected to represent me does not do so, it will be turned over and we will find a new government. And I am not threatening this council at all. I am just saying that I am coming here and I am pleading with this council to do something about this. Because if you do not, I will have to take it upon myself, and I will break no laws, and I will do everything by the book, and I will give you no reason to send me to jail or anything. But I will make the biggest nuisance you have seen this side of the Civil War. You laugh, sir.
No.
But I am a United, allow me to finish. I'm a United States.
Time is up, so why don't you do a closing remark? Go ahead and do a closing remark. I'm not laughing at you, sir, I'm smiling because I found the way you said your comment was very enlightening. That's all.
Oh, okay.
It actually was a very respectful smile, because a lot of times we get, we do get threats, and we get very belligerent individuals. What I'm hearing from you, and that's why, that's why I gave you the courtesy, the smile, was not, that was actually for you, saying, I appreciated the way that you presented yourself, I appreciate your passions, and most importantly, thank you for your service, and I'm sorry you're disabled because of it. We have to look into the limitations over the city attorney's office, what we can do with a corporation that's operating within our city limits, and we'll look at every possible stone that we can turn to do that. If for some reason the law does not allow us to do that, it will be communicated very succinctly to you, whether it be face-to-face, email, whatever you prefer. So leave whatever, I think we have contact information for this gentleman. So we'll make sure we can follow whatever we can possibly do within a letter of law that allows our authority, we will do on your behalf.
Excellent, thank you very much, and I apologize for that.
No, no problem. No, I appreciate, again, I was smiling because I really appreciated not only your candor, but the way you conducted yourself.
Thank you, sir. I also have a couple extra copies, is it okay if I leave them with the audience for anyone?
Bunch of them with the city attorney, right, sitting right there, assistant city attorney.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're my pleasure. And again, thank you for your service, and I'm sorry that you got disabled during our service. We would not have this job if it wasn't for people like you. So thank you. Okay, next person?
You have no more requests to speak.
Okay, call the next item then.
Okay, your next item this evening is scheduled presentations. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city proclaiming July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Okay, and I have a note here that members of the Folsom Disc Club are gonna join me down here at the microphone here, Chris Salcone, Bren Mundell, and Chris Seepert. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name, but if you join the vice mayor and I down here, we have a proclamation for you. Nice to meet you.
This is Ben Mundell, treasurer.
Nice to meet you.
And Chris Seepert could not make it after.
Here he comes. We'll let you guys hold it, and then just use this one. Okay, right there's the TV camera. That usually gets everybody right then and there. Anyway, so, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming July 2018 as Parks Make Life Better Month, whereas Parks and Recreation makes lives and communities better now and in the future, and whereas it is established through statewide public opinion research that 98% of California households visit a local park at least once a year, 2 in 3 households visit a park once a month, 50% of households participate in an organized recreation program, and most park use is with family and friends, whereas residents value recreation as it provides positive alternatives for children and youth to reduce crime, mischief, especially during non-school hours, it promotes the arts, it increases social connections, aids in therapy, and promotes lifelong learning, and whereas parks provide access to the serenity and the inspiration of nature in outdoor spaces, as well as preserve and protect historic, natural, and cultural resources in our community. Whereas residents value their parks and facilities for access to outdoor and indoor spaces for children and adults to play and be active, exercise, and participate in groups, sports, and activities. And whereas the residents of Folsom, including children, youth, families, adults, seniors, businesses, community organizations, and visitors benefit from the wide range of parks, trails, open space, sports fields, tennis courts, facilities, programs, and of course the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary. And whereas the Folsom Parks and Recreation Department dedicated a new educational exhibit for public enjoyment and historical relevance, excuse me, to the zoo sanctuary with the opening of the barnyard experience on June 28th. And whereas the Folsom Parks and Recreation Department will dedicate Economy Family Park, the city's 47th park, to the citizens of Folsom this month for families, adults, youth, and organizations to use and enjoy. And whereas the Folsom City Council urges all residents to recognize that Parks and Recreation enriches the lives of its residents and visitors, as well as adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Steve Miklos, mayor of the city of Folsom, do hereby proclaim July as Parks Make Life Better Month, and in doing so urge all citizens to use and enjoy Folsom's parks, trails, open space, facilities, and recreational opportunities. Proclaim this 10th day of July 2018. So congratulations for representing, and if you'd like to say a few words, we'd be happy to do that. Here's your proclamation. Talk about special disc golf.
We're very happy to accept this on behalf of our city, City Parks Department. We've worked with them for the last two years, and they've really been fantastic for helping us find a niche for our activity that we love to do here in our town. There are so many offerings that the City Parks Department has provided for citizens, and my family has benefited from many of them, from trails and parks to open spaces. And the fact that I get to play one of my favorite sports here now is even more icing on the cake. So there's lots of people I'd love to recognize from the city, but I'll just name a couple. Robert Goss, director, was the first contact I made, and he's been vital in getting us on a path to get to where we've come. Also Derek Perez, who's helped us with programming that we do with this sports complex. And then Tim O'Shea, who's also been vital in helping us get the disc golf course exactly the way it is today. So we always aim to do more improvements to it and make it an activity that all can enjoy, but we're very grateful to live in a city where we can enjoy so much of the outdoors activities and sports that it offers.
Thank you.
So thank you.
I want to say something, because this has been a myth of Lynn's page for 30 years. She's been telling me about this disc golf. Okay, now we have a living example that it doesn't exist.
So Lynn's a mythbuster, that's what you're trying to tell us, sir.
Absolutely, so I'm glad to see you here.
Glad to see you here.
Now I can, I can believe in you now.
Well, it's multi-generational, so all ages, all abilities are welcome to join in.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, our next item on the agenda.
Would you like to call it? Yeah, I'll do it. I'm gonna take the mayor's privilege here on behalf of my colleagues and I, and ask Mr. Palmer to go down to the microphone down there. We'd also like to ask his family to come up to the microphone, I see Laura out there. He can plug the microphone down there, and of course my colleagues. We can all congregate down there. Elaine, Jim, staff, please join us.
The advantage of being mayor is I don't have to hold it.
So as most people know, that Everett Palmer is retiring. His last official day is midnight Sunday. This is his last council meeting, and this is a very, very small token of appreciation and affection, not only from the city council and your community, but certainly the staff that's here this evening, representing the great work of the men and women of this city that you have given opportunities, leadership, advancement, I mean, I can go on and on and on. We're happy to read all those wherases, but...
The print's too small, right?
I was actually, I was actually considering it, I thought, well, maybe he should read his own, but I, but seriously.
Print's too small for me, too.
But seriously.
I'm the old guy here.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. So if you hold it, I'll read it. So just, these are just a few highlights, because there's, there's so many. I mean, after 24, almost 25 years, Everett and I have known each other, I think we started with the city about the same time, as a planning commissioner, and he came in, I think, as an IT person or something. So this is, this is especially proud for a lot of us, but it starts out with, whereas Everett Palmer first joined the city of Folsom over 22 years ago, serving the city as assistant director of finance information technology manager, director of administrative services, and assistant city manager. Whereas as assistant city manager, Everett led the planning and construction of the state-of-the-art Folsom Public Library, Georgia Murray Building, and was also the driving force behind the revitalization of the historic Folsom. In October 2011, the city council unanimously appointed Everett as city manager, recognizing extraordinary abilities and commitment to and passion for service to the city of Folsom. And whereas city manager Everett took his leadership skills to the next level, helping to expand public safety services, improve customer service, and recruit major employers to Folsom during his tenure. And whereas Everett successfully navigated the city through an unprecedented economic recession and dissolution of the city's redevelopment agency, working with the Folsom City Council and his management team to maintain the high level of Folsom services and amenities by redesigning service delivery and reducing transactional costs. And whereas Everett forged meaningful and effective relationships with Folsom's community and regional partners, bringing together business, the business community, excuse me, business, community, educational, faith-based, and other stakeholders time and time again to carve out and reach consensus on solutions to complex challenges. Whereas Everett's many and varied accomplishments will live on in his community long after he exits City Hall, including the completion of Nisanan and Economy Parks, the Johnny Cash Trail, our new fire station 39, and an updated general plan. The complex web of thoughtful planning and decisions that led to the first homes being built south of Highway 50, and a streamlined city organization designed to be fiscally sustainable through economic changes, among many, many other accomplishments. Whereas Everett's ability, sincerity, strategic skills, extraordinary depth of knowledge, and sense of humor are valued and recognized by the city council, you know I'd get you on that one, his employees and every person he interacts with in his city CEO role, whether he is working with a resident on a pothole issue or negotiating a multimillion dollar agreement. Now therefore I, Steve Miklos, mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, the citizens of this community, and I want to say your executive staff and every employee in this city, extend commendations and the highest regard to Everett Palmer, wish him, his wife, him and his wife Laura, his children and his grandchildren the best in his well-earned retirement, and bestowed the esteemed title city manager emeritus to Everett Palmer with all the rights and privileges associated there to pass and adopted this 10th day of excitement day of July 2018.
There's zero responsibilities.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, we heard there was free pizza or something afterwards.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone. This is a great community, but...
Sorry.
But not by accident, right? Not by accident, because decades ago, people put forward a vision for this community that it would be, it would become kind of the center of Sacramento Valley for, for economic sustainability, for culture, for recreational opportunities, for employment opportunities. And this team, this council team over the years, the executive team, all of the staff, members of the community, came together and really pushed and really built that dream out over the course of these many decades, and we're all better off for it. And I think the vision simply was, wouldn't we like to have a community that, that when our kids leave high school, or they come back from college, they can find a place to work and make a meaningful wage and, and do that in a community that they would like to live in, right? And boy, haven't we achieved that, and haven't we set this community up for, for the next 100 years, right? So... All of the fine men and women around you will, will, will work and do their best to, to make sure that that dream...
95630.
95630, thank you very much, and congratulations to Elaine for, for stepping up, yeah.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate that on behalf of Everett.
Yeah. Thank you.
Everett and I, over the years, have had some very loud discussions. Some people would call it arguments, but we call it discussions, because at the end of it, we're still friends. But he put me in a trick. At my age, I don't like transition. And now I gotta make another transition, because I grew up respecting ladies and not arguing with the women. So now Everett, you forced me into making a change in my lifestyle.
Yeah, call me and scream at me and then do what she says.
But I still know his number. If I had to be polite to Elaine, I'll call her up, call his number up anonymously and tell him what I think about him. No, he's, he's the epitome of the professional. He can make his point, he can listen to your point, and when it's all done, we're still friends. I appreciate that. Thank you, Everett.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just chime in, just to say a few words, but the, and it was captured very well in that resolution of commendation there, and it, you know, I just look at the personal, the technical, and the political touch you can bring to so much, and, and that's all important in various amounts for everything that you as a city manager have dealt with. You deal with council members, staff, members of the community, but thanks for your deft touch on, on everything you've touched for the past seven years as city manager, but even before that and your other roles in the city. So thank you, Everett, you'll be, you'll be missed, as we all know, but I'm a well-earned and well-deserved retirement, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have had my foot halfway in my mouth several times, and Everett has come to rescue me, so our Friday meetings always consist of 15 minutes of the agenda, and then like 45 minutes, maybe an hour of me just spewing and him going like this. All right. So I greatly appreciate it for someone new on the council and onboarding, it's great to have someone who's not afraid to tell me your, your stance and your, and your insight, almost father figure type situation, if you will, so I greatly appreciate that, no matter what the topic is or, or what the mindset is on, on the topic, it's still very much respectful and very much appreciated, so for the time I've had, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, sir.
We may have more surprises later, I'll think of something as we go. So with that, call the next item.
Next is your consent calendar.
Okay, anybody wishing to pull anything off consent, and of course 7F is amended, we all have copies of the amendment.
So can I pull B and D?
I'm sorry, say it again.
B and D.
B is in void, D is in dog, okay?
Yeah.
Any others?
A, C, E, and F is amended.
Okay, I have a motion seconded by the vice mayor, call the roll on those items, please.
Councilmember Gaylord.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And item B, if you read that one. Sure. Item B is Resolution Number 10150, a resolution supporting a joint funding application with the Capital Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority to fund a portion of the Capital Southeast Connector project through the Sacramento Area Council of Government's Regional Funding Program.
Roger, I think you pulled that one.
So I only have one question on the financial impact. It said there was no impact, but then it said approximately 1.8 million, so what's the, what is that, what's the impact on, I don't know if that would come from Jim, or...
No, this is, shouldn't be any impact at all, though.
So let me just make sure I understand your question here. This, part of this request for applying for these funds, there is no initial obligation. Should we be awarded the funds? At that time, we would bring it back to your council for authorization to enter into the agreement and receive the funds with a possible local match.
So just to make sure, and that's what I wanted to find out, this isn't, if this isn't like an all, say, if, if it's approved, we just spend the 1.8, it comes back to council?
Correct.
We get that decision at that point to say, hey, we would like to spend that and we'll do that?
That's correct.
Okay. That's really the only question.
And it's a possibility of maybe having a match, we're hoping that we don't have to, and that's one of the things that we're asking Secog to reimburse us, to reinstate the other seven and a half million we've asked for that we put on hold.
But either way, that comes back.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
And then for...
Is that a motion for that item, or...
Yeah, I'll motion in that item.
Okay, I'll second. Call the roll on that item, please.
Councilmember Gaylord.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And D, if you want to read that one off.
Sure. Item 7D is Resolution 10152, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two to the agreement with Elite Maintenance Management Systems to provide janitorial maintenance services at various city of Folsom facilities.
Roger, that's yours.
So I don't know the best way to address this, but we had some, some issues come up recently with regards to the, to the garage, and that's under this, this particular company within the agreement, so I wanted to bring that back prior to adding additional services to take a peek at what's actually going on currently, what we're spending on that, and if that's the right thing to be doing at this point, so...
Yeah, so this is Robert Goss, Parks and Recreation Director. Absolutely fair question, Councilmember Gaylord, but to be fair, in this particular situation, there is some ownership of the issue that, that the staff has. Managing a contract, or administering a contract of this nature is dynamic versus passive, and we met a perfect storm, if you will, this spring, when we lost the CDCR crews in terms of our contracts, so we had to shift our attention off of the broad thing, number of things that we do, to some very focused things associated with re-debatement, and frankly, we took our eye off the ball. That does not excuse the contractor's performance, but it is a two-way street, that we have to verify performance and report to them, and that was not being done. We've met with the contractor, they understand our position, that we don't need to be, we shouldn't have to look over their shoulder all the time, that is our job, and we will get back at it, but we are playing a little bit of catch-up, to be perfectly frank, with our situation on all facilities and assets in the city.
I guess I'm just a little reluctant to add more after seeing that, regardless if it's a, if it's a city versus sub issue.
Yeah, if we were to continue to have a problem, we have out clauses in the contract, so if we, like I said, if we have a problem, we can get out. It is that, I think there are also some shared responsibilities, we're working with the police department, because frankly, we have some vandalism and some vandalism cleanup issues associated with some of your concerns, I believe, and we're working with PD to increase some watch and patrol of the parking structure to make sure that we, you know, get rid of the problem the best we can. It's summer, and every, every summer, new issues arise, and we did not have the cleanup dialed in on this one.
I would, I would love to see this come back, like, at another time, after we see the performance go back, because I haven't seen the other facilities.
There might be, yeah, there might be some, a little perspective I can add to this as well, and, and that is, there are individual or, or different crews that cover various different portions of the city facility portfolio, and we're not experiencing that amount of difficulty that we were having in the parking garage and other places. This facility would be probably a good example of that, where you might, we might have tiki-tacky performance issues here or there. For the most part, this facility and many others are being handled very well by this company. And so I think to penalize the whole company in every location for the dynamic situation that we had in the parking garage might be a little extensive and perhaps unfair to the contractor, because they are doing a pretty good job at other locations, and so I think Director Goss is correct, and that is, if we continue to have issues in any single facility, that would cause us to want to throw the rest of our portfolio on the table and say, if you want this whole contract, you better get with it. I think that conversation has already been had. Historically, those conversations are productive, and I would expect it to be productive in this, this time, too, so if we continue to see those type of things, approving this tonight wouldn't necessarily foreclose any of those opportunities, so...
Is this contract bid out?
It is. This is a one-year extension, so we've had a two-year relationship with them. This is, I think the issue that you're referring to is, is the most significant lapse of service that we have had, and it was not insignificant. We've caught up and we're back on par again. However, this is a one-year extension, and we will rebid probably early in 2019, the spring of 2019, and we'll be back in about 11 months with another bid result and a recommendation for a longer-term contract.
Yeah, see, that's the thing that I don't like, the extension on it, I mean, honestly, the thing, the thing with the garage was, I mean, having, having facilities that have some issues is one thing, but that garage was, after going there twice, it was, it was, it was not good.
Well, and just to be clear, there were a combination of custodial issues and vandalism issues.
No, it was mostly custodial, I mean, I don't want to debate the fine details, but going there myself and having, I get emails, and I don't know if you guys saw my pictures, but my pictures, I mean, the bathroom was like, that's like 12 months of not cleaning. That's a failure, not on the city, but if we hire someone to clean that, I don't want to extend or reward somebody with our money from taxpayer dollars if, if that job is not being done. I didn't go around and look at every... I didn't go around and look at every facility within their contract, so I don't want to chastise them for just one thing. But that one thing was, was hor, it was ridiculous.
That is a fair concern, but I don't think a fair assessment of their overall performance.
I can only judge them off that. I mean, at this point, unless you want to give me a list of facilities and I'll go walk them.
Well, we use them citywide, and we, on occasion, have issues. But what the, what residents and people that pay attention to these concerns don't, I think, appreciate is that we, we either staff and/or the custodial contractors can do a service and 30 minutes later have a complete disaster, and it's the nature of...
Did you see my pictures?
I did, I did. And I've, and I've seen, I have many years of experience in this.
That's not 30 minutes later. So I get, I totally get to get your point. I'm not trying to argue that point. I'm saying I don't want to reward somebody with a contract increase and increased services and revenue if the performance isn't there. So from seeing that, that tells me the performance wasn't there. So I would much rather look at seeing what else is being done, how that, how that looks, how that relates, and then where does that, like, what we're spending that on and the performance based on that, so the value for...
Right. To the city manager's point, that's a isolated problem, one facility at this point. If we, if we have a pattern of issue, we'll certainly address it through the provisions of the contract.
Let me ask you a question, Robert. This facility here, the City Hall, is under the same contract agreement.
Correct.
And they do a beautiful job in this building. This is fine.
I would say that they do a good job.
I don't think it's apples-to-apples.
It's never, it's never, it's never perfect. We always strive for more. But yes, thank you.
You should have seen the other stuff we used to have, okay? It's done well. Now, every time we have a big event down on Southern Street, we have problems in that garage because the park and rec people can't handle it all by themselves, which they were doing. But again, this could be an isolated case. We've had other, this is not the first time we've had a problem. I haven't seen your pictures, Roger, so I don't know. I don't know what was ahead of it and what was the day of it, because that has a lot to do with how that garage ends up, but...
If I had concerns over the long-term performance of this contractor, I would not recommend the contract. I'll leave it at that.
I don't know how I'm going to recommend them off the garage. I mean, I was shocked. Literally shocked.
Well, I have to, I have to evaluate all of the city facilities and this being one case. And as I said in my opening comments, contract administration is a two-way street. Contractor needs to perform, we need to verify. We had to take our eye off the ball because of other extenuating circumstances that affected the Parks and Recreation Department, and we're back on it. So we'll own 50% of this problem.
So there's no way this can't go, like, a little longer to see how, like, evaluate at least? I mean, that's a crown jewel of Sutter. It's the...
Well, they're not under contract if we don't approve the contract, is the problem.
Is there a way to extend it where it's not a full-length year?
Well, certainly, we could rewrite the contract, but there are also provisions for non-performance to get out of it. And we have done that in the past with, not with this contractor, but we have exited contracts due to poor performance. So we're not afraid of that process. It's not a matter of just get it done, sign the contract, and move on. We, we'll exercise our rights in the contract if necessary.
So what do you consider non-performance?
Repeated, you know, experiences like you took pictures of.
Let me ask, Roger, have you seen more, just a one-time affair, or have you been in the garage where you've seen other incidents?
The state of the garage was not just a one-time, after a party, somebody spilled some trash somewhere. The state of the garage was, I'll just show you the pictures. I mean, maybe, I, I thought, the thing was, is I didn't find it. It was, it was, it was sent to me, and so I went and verified it, and then I went and verified it twice just to make sure, because I was kind of like taken back a little bit, because it's certainly not what we strive for. And level of service from staff, I mean, we always, I mean, look at the streets, it's apparent that we hold, you know, we have standards. And that's my problem. It's not on staff. It's if we're going to hire a vendor or subcontractor to do something for us, they're better done or do it. Or, I mean, this was the case of something not being done for, for months, easily months. I mean, would you, would you agree with that? Just to look at the...
I would, but as I said, and, and there are not, not the same crew does all the work in the city. The city's too big that way.
But that company does.
So there's, that company, the EMS company does all of the work, but different crews do different facilities. So we clearly had a bad crew. They've acknowledged that. They have changed the crew out, and it was over a couple of months. There's no, I'm not denying that. But that is my point about with going back to early May when we lost our CDCR crews, our attention went to public safety with re-debatement, and we had to take our eye off of that ball and did, and got burned for it, frankly. So we're, our eyes back on the ball.
I guess all I'm asking for is not to vote on increasing a 12-month agreement for this. I don't know how that works.
Well, I was gonna say, but the increase, as I understand, is because we added facilities. If those facilities weren't there, it'd be an extension of the current contract.
Correct. We added facilities, a number of different facilities, highlighted in the staff report, and we're proposing to go one year to June 30th of 2019. And again, if there are ongoing issues, we will exit the contract.
I want to nip them now, though, because that's what people see. When people come to Folsom for historic Folsom, they park in their garage. If I parked in that garage coming from anywhere else in Folsom, it's even worse if I came from Folsom. But if I came from outside of Folsom, I wouldn't be coming back to that garage, for sure. And so they are a direct extension of us by taking care of that property, but that's what we're hiring them for.
No argument.
So that's what, that's, that's my problem is, and it has nothing to do with, like, I'm not trying to scold or chastise on it. I'm just saying, after seeing it, it was apparent that they're not doing their job.
Well, staff has addressed that, and we have scolded and chastised them. That's the, that's the owner's responsibility if you find non-performance, and we did.
So I guess I just want to measure that, that response on how they take that without giving them another contract extension. In my business, when I, when I fail on something, I don't ask them for a new contract. I fix the failure, I prove myself, and then I move forward. I don't, I guess that's my issue. Like, I don't know, should they replace the crew or whatever? That's fine. But is it going to fix the problem? So that's all I'm saying.
Well, that's our responsibility to verify that they do. If we don't have them under contract, we can't have them work, we can't pay them, and we don't have liability coverage through their insurance. So we have to have them under contract. But we can, you know, hold them to the, to the quality provisions of the contract and release them if they continue in a non-conformance or non-performance way.
So when does this one expire?
I believe, I, well, it expired actually in terms of the, the added facilities and the extension June 30th of 2018, so two weeks ago, 10 days ago.
And does it have an evergreen to it, or?
An evergreen?
Does it, does it like go for a certain cycle after the expiration?
No, the extension would take it one year.
He's asked for an extension after the expiration.
I'm asking if, yeah, does it, like, when, if it's already expired right now, are they currently not working for us?
No, it's on speculation. I mean, we, that we have it. Everything's, everything's in line.
So there's no pressure to sign another 12-year agreement, right?
12 months.
12 months, sorry. 12 months.
No, we need to get them under contract.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, maybe there, maybe just to redirect the conversation a little bit, maybe this would be best considered as, as what are our best alternatives, right? Best alternatives to approving this contract, knowing that we, we have reasons to terminate this contract for performance purposes and reasons to terminate it at our sole discretion. And so the alternatives would be to not continue maintenance on some of these facilities and go out and bid an alternative contract and find an alternative contractor, which is likely a six-month proposition by the time that gets done. And this gets back on the council's agenda to award. And so curing, you know, even the most severe pieces of non-performance are oftentimes the best alternative to having it have been perfect to begin with, because finding other alternative, finding other contractors is a lengthy process with, again, no assurance that they would be any better than the current contractor that we have. So my recommendation is, we use the power of the contracts that we have. We would extend these contracts to move forward and put the trust in that this is fixed. And if that trust is not, if the contractor doesn't become worthy of that trust, and we find that they are unable to perform, we will have had at least a little bit more time to adapt to what our other alternatives are, because clearly to me, and the reason why we're bringing this forward is the best alternative to perfect is fixing what we have and moving forward.
Thoughts or comment from anybody?
You know, I just have a, just to answer a few questions in my mind. So how, how often are these, how often does this company go through the parking structure under the current contract? Are they there every other day, every day, once a week?
I can't recite for you the specific specifications on that, but they have different responsibilities for different tasks or different frequencies for different tasks. So the restroom is on one schedule, the general parking structure is on another. And again, I don't know them off the top of my head, but for like, there, there seems to be an interest in summer, summer late-night activities on the top level to break glass and throw eggs. And right, and I got this straight from Timosh Shafe, Facilities Maintenance Manager, today. The day after, we had cleaned up the, the mess that you had taken pictures of and forwarded to us, literally the day after, we find the remnants of three dozen egg cartons on the top level of the parking structure with the three dozen eggs on the clock tower. So literally the day after. So it is, it's just one of the things that we have to deal with, that we can do things and have things looking perfect one day, and the very next day, or even less than 12 hours later, they're a mess again. So that's not exactly your question, but the answer to your question was certain things have certain schedules of cleaning.
Understood. And, because I, you know, I guess a couple of things come to mind. I mean, number one, we need to, we need to video the heck out of that structure.
We have, we are on that as well.
And, and, and my role on the regional transit board where we have problem light rail stations and stuff, you know, we've, we've employed video setups that have two-way audio. And, and so, you know, it's amazing how effective just people knowing they're being watched and stuff can start to cut that down. The other piece to this is, is, you know, certainly there, it just seems like there was some massive dereliction of duty on the part of the contractor. But is there, is there a problem with the scope of the work we're contracting with? I mean, you mentioned we get into these tougher times where it just seems like maintenance might need to be more frequent. I mean, and I'm not saying with this company, but do, do we need a better scope of work for that facility because everything that was just articulated?
I believe at this point, the scope is fine, that it was the specific crew assigned to that, and that crew has been replaced. And they, they are not working in Folsom any longer.
Yeah, I, I...
So that would, that would be our, I mean, we typically don't fire a contractor for, you know, one offense. And this wouldn't be, I mean, I'm not going to suggest that they have been perfect up to this point. We work with them and counsel them, you know, two, three, four times a year, just certain specific areas. This is one that was very public, very visible, and very much in need. But that, that has, staff has taken care of that.
Andy? Anybody?
I mean, I can, I absolutely agree in large extent to what Roger is saying. But I'm also looking at and hearing what our staff is saying, the fact that of all the facilities they do, nothing's totally perfect. We had one miscue, and it wasn't the contractor, it was a crew. The crew is not only not there, it's not even in the city anymore. The contractor now knows they're on notice to basically say, you know what? Shame on us because we didn't look over your shoulder, and we shouldn't have to. But more importantly, now that you know that we're looking over your shoulder and we're demanding, you know, a better level of service, you know, pretty confident based on the other facilities, including this one, that they're on notice that if you don't perform, then you're out of there. I agree with the city manager, and my concern is, I'd like to go forward on this one. I hear Roger's concern, I mean, but I know we have outs. I know we have non-performance clauses. We put them on all our contracts with all our, our vendors. Because I can't go three weeks or six months to not have the new restroom serviced at, at the chamber, as an example, that area, or the corporation yard, and some of these other facilities you want, and our brand-new, you know, sanctuary zoo barn. You know, I can't, I can't afford to not have that attention. We certainly don't have the expertise within City Hall to go down and actually professionally clean some of these things. But I think the point Roger is making very succinctly is, yeah, they, they need to step it up a notch. And I'm hearing from you, you're satisfied with the, certainly the, the action the contractor as a whole is taking, he's gotten rid of the crew, put a better crew in there. So I just think the, we need to manage that and manage it very well. I agree with Andy's point, because I'm thinking, you know, it's difficult to have to look over everybody's shoulder, because we have so many facilities, it's impossible. And I, I know your staff is well taxed at everything they already do. So what's the next obvious thing? And maybe with this gentleman's assistance, we can put the proper videos and audios in there to assist police and parks and rec about some of this stuff.
We, we have the video. Now it's a matter of being on it.
Well, there's integrated video as well, you know, having, having connection with PD to be able to bring this up remotely in an enterprise-level system.
That's the next step. We have the video. Now it's be able to put it up live.
Okay.
Eggshell vandalism and broken glass, I can live with, because that's, that's, you know, an event issue that happens because of kids up there or, you know, teenagers doing their thing, or even adults or whatever. But the condition of the building is my problem. The condition of the bathrooms is my problem. The condition of business owners saying I will never use the elevator is my problem. That's not something that is, that's isolated to an event or a one-time occurrence. If we have out clauses, I would have invoked that out clause because of this. I would have fired this contractor straight up. And so that's all I'm saying. I haven't judged them off anything else, but I have no problem going to those other spots. And it really irritated me because I didn't, this came to me from a resident, and it came to me from another business owner. And so I went down there myself and checked it out, and I was just, I was blown away, literally blown away. So I can't, I couldn't reasonably vote to extend anyone's contract. If I had a restaurant and this is the service they did, gone, 86th. It wouldn't even be a question. So I don't know. I'll just leave it at that, I guess.
So here, here's how, here's the, the way I'll support, the way this is written, is number one, and actually, I think back to the mayor's ride that we started at the top of the parking structure. And that wasn't that long ago. It was, what, May 17th, 15th, 12th, 11th, something like that. And I wasn't in every nook and cranny of the garage, like the elevators and, and the restrooms, but it certainly, it was a lot better than, you know, those pictures that were sent. So I understand how this can just, you know, explode on you as far as having to deal with this. But I'll support this, but what I'd like to see is, number one, I'm going to wander around there quite a bit. I park down there at least twice a month just to ride the train. And what I'd like to see is, is a report back in, you know, like, let's see, what do we got? We don't do, maybe, do we just do a, an August meeting at the end of the month, right? So, so what I'd like is, is a report back on, on our observations to date on that so that, you know, we can really get a sense from staff and, you know, again, you know, personally, because I, you know, I'll look for a reason to get out. This, you know, it better be good, it better be done right, because, you know, if there's, you know, no, no second chances here. And, um, and remind me, what, what does it take to, to escape the contract? Is it?
Don't have the contract in front of me, but typically it's 30 days notice.
Okay.
Written notice.
All right. So, so, so with that, I'll, I'll, I'll move the item if, if, if that's not too much to ask for staff to bring something back and, and let us know how things are going down there.
Staff will be happy to bring that back on August 28th.
Thank you, Mr. Retired City Manager.
I'm going to go ahead and second, but I would, I'd like to add another caveat to Councilmember Moore's. I know we want to, you know, bring something back for his report by now, August. I'd also like to institute non-scheduled surprise visits. Because if they know you're going to be out here on a regular frequency, because we know what their frequency is.
Mystery shopper program, that's what it is.
Because I think that's the, to Roger's point, that's really the way to best demonstrate whether or not they've taken our, our issues to heart. And at the same time, we're going to continue to monitor all the other facilities and see if one is suffering over the detriment or improvement of the other. I mean, this facility is, I agree with Ernie, this facility was a disaster before you started finding some good people in here. No one's ever going to be perfect, but this place is pretty darn close. I mean, we've been here a while. But I agree with Roger, I mean, that was pathetic. It was nice when we did the mayor's ride, it was May 11th, so, you know, if they dropped the ball.
I noticed some things, we worked on them.
At lower levels, that was the issue. The top one, it had some bad stuff.
We were at the top, yeah, we were, we were at the top.
It was just that the sites were the health areas, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, the restrooms were, but anyway, but I'm hearing you and trusting you and, and knowing that your, your certainly commitment to the city and what you're hearing from, from the four of us here, and Carrie's here, it'd be the five of us, and manager. This has got to be dealt with, it's got to be dealt with very sharply and, and very proactively, and it sounds like you've done that. Now, we're giving you some time to.
Keeping public restrooms clean and, and acceptable is one of the toughest jobs in public service.
Yeah.
I got a question, Roger, Robert. At one time, when the guy went out parking wreck, was required to clean everything in there, as far as the bathrooms and that.
Parking wreck staff?
Yeah. You park a wreck, because the guy that was on call.
There have been times that we have moved away from staff performed to contractor performed.
Okay, is that, this is the case of that? You, you, you don't have responsibility in your maintenance people to do the bathrooms? It's, it's on contract now?
We supplement it, because there are times when you can get the contractors in times, again, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact schedule, but, but our staff supplemented because the, the historic district is a vital, obviously it's part of our brand, and so, any kind of a poor experience in a public restroom is not a good thing.
I understand.
So, we supplement that to make sure. And, and the mystery shopper program, that is our, that is our style.
Okay. Yeah, I know we have, I mean, I know we've got tons of issues because of the homelessness from the light rail in that area and all that kind of stuff. And, and I, you know, see enough lieutenants and commanders in here to say that, we'll probably deal with that accordingly as well. So, but yeah, this is, this is a difficult one to swallow, so to speak. So, we'll just see how it goes.
We are.
And then, just one last thing, and then, you know, when you get back to us at, at our end-of-the-month meeting in August, if you could just give us like a 30-second update just on, on, you know, kind of the, the video that we have there now and what the goal is, I'd, I'd just like to hear that. Because I, again, we've had great success with that at Regional Transit, and I know that takes time to, to implement things like that, but just where we're at and where we'd like to get to and that sort of stuff. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Catch almost everything here? I said, did we catch everything? Not on here, I have it on my computer. Oh, I saw them.
I took more. I mean, I'm just saying.
Oh, no, I saw them. No, I, we, I don't know, I thought the Vice Mayor got the email as well, because I got the email as well. But no, those are very disturbing, and that's why I'm saying that if it was, if it was systemic within the contractor's responsibilities and authorities of everything that they clean the city, it'd be a whole different avenue. But I'm hearing we have a very derelict crew that was been released from the contractor, let alone even working in the city, and has been replaced by a crew, and they're on notice that if they don't perform 30 days, even if it's one facility, they're out of here. I think that's the bottom line.
We can be forward.
Yeah, so, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Call, roll on the item, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes, with all the caveats. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item this evening is Public Hearing Item 8A. This is the Resolution Number 10154, approving the final engineer's report, confirming the diagrams and assessments, and ordering the continuation to levy assessments for maintenance and servicing of improvements within all of the City of Folsom's L and L districts for fiscal year 2018-19.
You didn't want to read all those, huh?
I did not.
Lorraine Pajoni, Parks and Rec. Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the council. So, tonight you have before you the final engineer's report for all 29 districts that are in the city's landscape and lighting districts. There are two new districts that were added since last year. The approval of the Willow Creek East, number two, which was one of our successful overlays, and then also Prospect Ridge, which is a new development on Levy Road. So, those are the two new districts that are in this year's report. All the assessments are the same this year, with the exception, there's 11 districts that have CPI escalators that are allowable, and this year, we're, we're going to only access that CPI in five of the districts, and those are noted in the staff report and in the table. There, the CPI escalator this year was 2.94 percent. So, those five districts will reflect that. One thing I wanted to note that I just happened to notice before the, the meeting tonight was that in the chart in the resolution, we did not show that Natoma Valley was one of the five, but it was noticed, I checked the public notice, it was there. Your preliminary engineer's report that you approved in, on May 22nd had that in there. So, I will work with our legal folks, but I believe it would just be considered a typo, and before it goes to the county, we'll just add that, that, that increment, that add, that 2.94 percent for Natoma Valley. But the staff report has it in there, the prior report you approved, you approved in our public notice, saying that Natoma Valley would also be using that increase. So, it was just a typo I noticed about a half hour ago. So, some of the projects that we're going to be completing this year, you maybe have already noticed, but out of the six and a half miles of walls that we've been painting out in Broadstone, we're two-thirds of the way through, we just have a little bit left, and new landscaping has already been installed on Oak Avenue and Riley and East Bidwell. So, we'll be finishing that project. We're also in the process of doing a renovation project on some very large expanses of turf on Scholar that are a high-water user between East Bidwell and Broadstone, we'll be renovating that. We're going to be doing a repair and restoration to the American River Canyon North Waterfall, which has, has kind of given up the ghost. It's been a little over 30 years old, and with the pump, believe it or not, has never been replaced. It's a 20 horsepower pump that, they only make them in Sweden. So, we have ordered that, and we are waiting for that to arrive. It should be here in a month. Renovations to the landscaping of Willow Creek East from the new assessment that was approved, you'll be seeing some new changes there along Blue Ravine. Retrofit to the streetlights, changing to LEDs in Willow Creek East, and also Steeplechase. And then, we're beginning outreach in both Natoma Station and Prairie Oaks for assessment increases there. Those assessments haven't been increased in 24 to 29 years. With that, that concludes my, my presentation, and the engineer who prepares the report from SEI Consultants is here as well.
Okay, any questions of Lorraine?
Lorraine, I got one question.
Mic on.
Yeah. I think it's.
It's on now. Lexington Hills, they don't have HOA or anything, do they?
No.
It's just individual. So, the wall that runs down Oak Avenue, that's the city wall?
Yes.
That's, that's what I want to know, thank you.
Any questions of Lorraine? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. The public hearing is not open on this item. I do not have any requests to speak. Anybody wishing to come down and speak on this item is welcome to do so. See nobody rushing forward, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. It was the pleasure of the city council.
I'll move the resolution.
Got a motion, a second. The Vice Mayor, call, roll, please, on the item.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. And next item?
Your next item is Item 8B. This is two ordinances that are amendments to Title 17 of the Folsom Municipal Code, Ordinance Number 1286 and Ordinance Number 1287.
Good evening, Andy.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the city council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. This item before you, whoops, that's not the right presentation. Let's try that again. There we go. This item before you this evening includes several minor amendments to Folsom Municipal Code Title 17, which is all the city's zoning regulations. And as you know, the, many of the existing zoning regulations date back 20 to 40 years, and over time, we update them for a variety of reasons in small parts, right? We do that for state, state law changes that apply to charter cities. We do it per the direction of this city council in response to policies or issues that come up in, in day-to-day activities and, and project considerations and, and community concerns and things like that. In this case, we at a staff level keep a list of ongoing issues that, when we get five or six items on a list that are not, you know, of, of an urgent nature, we'll compile those and bring them back to you. And this is, that's the case here, we've got several minor amendments that staff have identified as something that, that needs to be cleaned up, either because it's ambiguous or needs some clarification for consistent application over time. We've got issues that have been raised by members of the community that, again, are non-urgent, or we would have been, been before you. And then, in, in this case, we also have a, a couple of residents in the historic district that are caught up in some of the inconsistencies that are unintended consequences of having two sections of the, the code that are inconsistent with one another. And so, I'm going to spend just five minutes talking about those changes and summarizing them, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. So, relative to the city's design review process and requirements, we're recommending the addition of an exemption for minor residential additions that are 120 square feet or less. This is really in keeping with best practices, and will be important to the city as we grow into more of a build-out community north of 50, that this expedites the reviews for existing development. And we've found that the rules and regulations on the books work well, as long as they're complied with, it shouldn't be a problem that we, you know, we need to bring forward to, to any of the commissions. We've simplified some of the design review requirements to take out things that are unnecessary. We're recommending to, a change to the manner in which we communicate decisions on design review, that's really more reflective of the way people access information right now. We post sites with decisions on a project site, and what we're recommending is we do away with the onsite posting. We keep the onsite posting to notify people about upcoming decisions, but then we post those decisions online. And lastly, that we extend the design review approval period from six months to two years, which was more in keeping with the, the majority of our entitlements. And in fact, we've heard from a lot of our customers here at the city that six months is really just not enough time to get everything together and get permits submitted sometimes. And so, we find ourselves running into extensions, or people get frustrated and don't, and don't follow through. The second set of changes I want to highlight are changes to several of the zoning district chapters, and these are intended, first item up here is intended to simply recognize that the city has, in the historic district, kind of two sets of, of use regulations. One is the underlying base zoning districts, and the second is a recognition that there are primary areas and subareas that talk about land use. And right now, Chapter 1752 does that, but our Chapter 1708, which is the foundation for all of the city zoning, doesn't do it. So, it meets the intent of, of the council at that time in adopting the historic district regulations, this just makes sure that there's not any inconsistencies in the code. And then, the second set of changes here, the second two items on the slide, are really bringing up-to-date some of the language regarding the types of land uses that are allowed in neighborhood apartment and general apartment districts. It's a little bit ambiguous right now, we use some antiquated terms, and we want to make sure that those are consistent, not just with the general plan, but the general plan densities and things like that. And so, again, kind of a cleanup item. And then, lastly, in 1752, Chapter 1752, which is our historic district, closing the loop on a recognition that there are two sets of allowed use regulations that apply to, to properties within the historic district, and we want to honor all of those. And then, it sets up rules where there's differences or requirements for conditional use permit. So, again, this is really in keeping with how we want to apply things, this is solving problems, this is making sure that moving forward, we're applying all of these regulations consistently. And as you know, with your consideration of a new general plan, one of the, the first tasks will do, you know, be to do a larger overhaul of the zoning regulations. That's not this. This is simply a couple of Band-Aids here and there that make sure that we're consistent and that we're not, there's not unintended consequences for people who are trying to do exactly what we envisioned for them to do in our general plan. Because, because some of these regulations are within the Chapter 1752, they're under the purview of the Historic District Commission. So, tonight you have two separate ordinances and two recommendations, one from the Planning Commission for your approval of Ordinance 1286, and the second from the Historic District Commission recommending the council approve or introduce and conduct first reading of the Ordinance 1287. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the specific changes.
Questions for Pam? Okay, I want to congratulate you on finding things exactly what you said. The, the inconsistencies can be very difficult, especially if we have two homeowners caught up in it right now. So, thank you for jumping on that right away.
Yep, that's the staff doing their jobs.
Okay, so, this is a public hearing, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come down, please do so, because we do not have any written requests to speak on the item. Seeing none at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And what's the discussion, pleasure of the council?
I'll go ahead and, do we have to do these separately?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
It's one from Planning Commission, one's from Historic District Commission.
All right, so I will go ahead and move Ordinance Number 1286, Item B, er, BI.
Okay. A second, call, roll on that item, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes.
And I'll go ahead and move Item 8B, double I, Ordinance Number 1287.
Got a second? Got a second down here? Call the item, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. Okay. That, thank you again, Pam, good catch, thank you, appreciate that. And next item.
Next item is your city manager reports.
Well, thank you.
This time, you get a little more time if you want.
That's okay, I, this community kind of speaks for itself, so, you know, nobody necessarily wants to miss a ballgame to listen to me talk about it, because you all get to experience it every day. But I will say, it has been absolutely my pleasure to serve this community for the two decades that I have. I've really enjoyed every minute of it, and it has been a blast. But I also enjoy fly fishing, playing guitar, chasing grandkids around in soccer fields, and doing any number of other things, even throwing a stick for a dog on occasion. So, looking forward to opportunities to do all of those things and, and explore what life has to offer after 18-hour days, six or seven days a week. It's really not that bad. So, congratulations to Elaine, she will serve this community very well. I am convinced she will be the best city manager ever to serve. And so, you, you will all be delighted to work with her, and she will keep up the, the great standards of professional conduct that you have come to enjoy from your staff. I mentioned earlier about some of the cultural opportunities. If you haven't been experiencing the summer concerts that are literally spread all over town, you're missing out. There are concerts, this, there is one this Friday at City Lions Park, right next door, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, that's July 13th. And if you haven't been to our gallery, we have a new gallery exhibit opening on Friday, and that's at the gallery next door at 48 Natoma. Again, this is on the 13th. If you're not into music, please stop by there between 6:00 and 8:00 PM for a colorful and thought-provoking exhibit on life's lessons. So, that will be very, very good. It's a great little gallery. If you haven't been there, I'd encourage you to check it out. And again, thank you all for your support. I've enjoyed working with each one of you, for sure, and the council members that I had worked with in the past that have now also retired. So, I'm looking forward to joining them, and maybe we'll get together every Tuesday morning for coffee or something, I don't know, but.
Your wife's like, no.
Yeah, I know, she's, right. I guess I should probably, I have a new boss, so I should probably ask for permission before I make any schedule arrangements, but.
There you go.
But thank you for your support of me. I've, again, I've enjoyed literally every minute of this job, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Everett. Roger, I'll start with you this evening.
Thank you, Everett, and happy retirement and enjoy. He wears like Chanel number five, and she wears Tropical Fruity Bubbleicious, so you're going to have to do the same, I don't know what it is, but, but other than that, I have nothing, thanks.
Andy?
Yeah, I'll just say thanks, Everett, and, and really look forward to working with Elaine and, and all our city staff, who do so well for us here. Hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. Sorry I missed the last meeting, but I was at a nephew's wedding in Hawaii, which is a good place to have a wedding, by the way. Let's see, had the privilege of attending an Eagle Court of Honor for Justin Morosky, Troop 237, this past Saturday evening, and.
Your troop, isn't it?
It is, it is. So, so, yep, between the mayor and Ernie and myself, I, I, I got that one, so, but, but we do, and Roger as well, and Carrie, those are, those are kind of highlights of something we do. So, so I had the pleasure of that. And then, just add, looking forward to the Economy Park dedication, that'll be Thursday, right? Thursday, I believe, so, uh, so no, good, uh, a lot of good weeks in the recent past and we'll have a lot of good weeks coming up, so thanks for that, good evening.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, one caution to Everett, uh, retirement is sometimes very much deceiving. I retired twice and I haven't, didn't, haven't retired, so be careful. Watch what you ask for. Uh, I just wanna, uh, thank the fire department, the police department, because of fireworks a week. Uh, I listened and watched the ambulance and the fire equipment go and the car, uh, patrol cars. Every time I heard a siren, I looked to see if it was an ambulance or a fire truck, cause it makes a difference, you know? Uh, I think it was healthy for the town, I think the town has respected, uh, the safety aspect, although I, I can say I've done this for about twenty-six years, I think I'm gonna retire again from that project. However, I've never seen so many illegal fireworks in all that time as I saw this year. I mean, it was fantastic. I mean, I guess we didn't, I know we got a lot, but we didn't get all of them. And it was amazing, uh, I don't know what's gonna happen. Hopefully, I think we had one fire in the backyard, started from a rocket, and the ones we were selling were not rockets. So I just say next year, please be careful. A friend of mine's house burned down, but it wasn't because of fireworks. It's traumatic, and what we see on TV and all the homes that are fire, it's just horrible. So, um, it was a good week, takes a week to get over that week. And, uh, this week is good and I'm looking forward, forward to the economy dedication, it should be very nice.
Thank you. Um, just briefly, I, I still have to say a few words about Everett. You know, it's funny, cause, uh, when he first told me what his, uh, long-term goals were, every once in a while, he'd slip in a word or two that, you know, he maybe didn't think I was paying attention, but I heard quite often, well, you know, Laura's retired and, you know, uh, we might do this and like more times of that and this and that. So Laura, he'd been thinking about this for a while, and I think it's because you laid down the law saying, hey, we got another chapter in our life and congratulations, Laura, I'm excited for you guys to start that chapter. And to one of my closest friends, uh, and for many, many years, yeah, this is the best job you ever had and you kept telling me it was, and, and we, we appreciate it, we recognize it, your staff recognized, I think, by the tribute they paid to you this evening. I certainly know that your employees that couldn't be here this evening recognize it and without question, I know your community recognizes. So yes, I'm glad that you felt this is the best job you ever had because you did the best job that anyone could expect from that position. And we know that Elaine will probably pick that up and, and in her own style, probably do the best job that we would see next from that position. I have all confidence in the world in you and Elaine and excited for that next chapter in your life, and certainly wish, uh, you very well on that. And I guess yours starts Monday because twelve oh one on Monday morning, it's your show and Ernie will be calling you at twelve oh two.